You're unmuted.
Thank you, sir.
Shout out somewhere.
Call this meeting to order. Any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments in general.
Public comment. The school board endorses the concept that community participation in the affairs of the school is essential to improve the quality of education for students. To be eligible to address the board, an individual should reside within the school unit, be an employee of the school unit, or be invited by the board or superintendent to speak. The board shall give due attention to comments and contributions from the audience, but shall not be expected to respond or take action immediately. Audience inquiries other than simple questions shall be referred to the superintendent, who shall investigate or consider the matter and report to the citizen and to the board. If action is indicated, the item may be included in the agenda for subsequent meeting. Comments will be heard for three minutes per person. Are there any public comments tonight?
According to.
I can't even see.
Michelle.
Michelle.
No, no.
Sorry, I can't see the name. Melanie, go ahead, please.
Hello, um, so I am just here to comment on the parking lot pickup line at Granite. I have three children that attend Granite when it turns. Prior to the trial run for the pickup line, the parking lot was a cluster. People parked wherever they felt like it. Children would run to their adults vehicles with no supervision and cars would speed through without regard to the safety of the children. It's nothing short of a miracle that a child has not been hit in that parking lot. People have no patience and without some kind of order, someone is going to get hurt. Just last week at the high school, I witnessed three cars pass a bus with flashing red lights, three. And no, the bus was not in the bus drop off location and no, these were not high school kids driving. These were parents, adults that had just picked up their kids at the middle school. Three cars illegally passed the bus. My point is this, we all have somewhere to be. We all have other things to do, but we are not all patient. We do not all put safety over our own impatience. The pickup line at Granite is great. The line moves quickly and the Granite Street staff does a great job. There is no more worrying about kids getting hit in the parking lot. As you move into the discussion about the parking lot and possibly vote to make changes, please remember that people's impatience with the pickup line should not take priority over the safety of even one child. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan?
Hi, um, thank you. Um, I can't adjust this too much lower. Um, first, I just wanted to know what the results were for the water testing at the school. Um, all the schools, I believe, and then I'm, I'm gonna come out of my comfort zone a little bit and after listening to a speaker for the better part of 10 minutes at the last meeting and seeing the recent letters to the editor, excuse me, I'm curious why the teachers are feeling defensive. I haven't seen anyone say anything negative about the teachers. They aren't demons. The school isn't a demon and neither are we, the citizens. And speaking for myself, I care about our town and about the kids. And I'm very concerned about the world these kids are living in and I want to make sure we're doing everything we can to give them the tools to succeed in it. I have no other motives and this isn't all or nothing thinking that if someone says one thing about one subject, that's like saying everything else is wrong. That's not how it is. But somehow there's been an atmosphere of the citizens intruding where they don't belong. The school belongs to all of us. We all have a right to take an interest. And you know, parents see kids through a certain lens. Schools see kids through a certain lens. Living where I do and having school age family, um, I see them through another lens when parents and teachers aren't around. And one of the turning points for me was what I witnessed in just the last year. As far as going up Central Street Hill and seeing an OD at Pedlers Hill, five minutes later going by the street Craig Stretch. Pictures, articles constantly filling the paper. That's the world we live in right now, unfortunately. And the turning point for me was when a bunch of kids were walking to my house with full view of another OD at a house two doors down from me with three police cars there with lights going. The ambulance left and the hearse pulled in. The kids came into my house and were unaffected. How could it be that they could possibly be that desensitized? And then when I looked around the table, one had recently woken up beside his father who had died from an overdose. Another one's father had committed suicide recently and on and on around the table. And you add to that the trauma that these kids live in. Every, even though, you know, some might wear the latest clothes and outwardly show, you know, that they don't have any problems, they don't have a label on their shirts. And I, I've tried to look into as much as I possibly could. And you know, we have a gifted and talented program, which that's good. We have parades for the sports teams. That's good. But what about the kids who should get an award just for coming to school? After what they'd endured in their household the night before? What about the kids have so much on their mind they can't concentrate? What about the kids that have agitated depression and act out? We only have one guidance counselor in each school. We can't afford a social worker, but the solution is an assistant principal. I just struggle with the idea that punishment is the answer. And what about going upstream and trying to help kids before punishment is necessary? Millinocket Hospital's emergency room has been filled for months with patients with mental illness and substance use problems. Millinocket has the highest number of calls for our police department. There are, these are just some of the reasons that I really struggle with our priorities. I've tried to ask for more information about even things like home ec shop class. And you know, my understanding of, of life skills is not for those who are restricted to IEPs, it's for all the kids, conflict resolution, confidence building, empathy. Um, how to handle checkbooks? How to fix a vehicle? All the things that will help them survive in this world. I see a few families doing things together, but many kids don't have that. Many kids don't have any adult supervision. And you know, when someone recently wanted to start an after school program at the school, they were going to be charged by the square foot. We, we can find money for a van and a paradise at Topecon for international kids. What about our kids? And then look what's going on in the world and in Texas. These kids don't live in a vacuum. They suffer from all this, just like we do. And the kids in town that I know of have stolen guns. They've been involved in arson and most of the calls in, in the police department are in Millinocket, so I'm just urging you to think carefully about your priorities and where some of the money should be spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none. Who will the minutes please?
Uh, motion to approve the minutes of the school board meeting, May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, bearing any errors or omissions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments? Seeing none. All in favor?
I'm understanding.
You understand?
I wasn't there.
Okay. So we got four. Motion for the payroll warrant, please.
Uh, motion is moved, moved to direct the superintendent of schools to authorize payment by the town treasurer to each party listed herein. The sum set against each name contained in the school payroll warrant, number twenty-two dash twenty-five in the amount of one hundred ninety-one thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and ninety-four cents on June second, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Second.
Motion, non, second, arrogant. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Five oh. Motion for the payroll warrant, please.
Uh, motion moved to direct the superintendent of schools to authorize payment by the town treasurer to each party listed herein. The sum set against each name contained in the school payroll warrant, number twenty-two dash thirty-six in the amount of one hundred fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents on June second, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Motion by Don, second by Kevin. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Five oh. Summer school, please.
Yes, I want to provide an update on our summer school program, um, how that's shaping up to be. So traditionally, uh, we've had title one funding for summer school. We also put some money into the S or three grant. So, um, our goal this year, um, was to address some of the unfinished learning that knew existed with COVID nineteen in the pandemic. Um, so I want to give an overview of what we're going to provide for opportunity. So at Granite, um, obviously it's going to be open for pre-K through fifth grade students. Um, in years past, we've averaged about thirty-five students in attendance a year. Um, those who responded so far, we are below that number, but that oftentimes increases as school comes to a close. So, um, we hired one teacher to direct the program schoolwide. And then at Granite, we are looking to hire four teachers and five support staff to support that program. Um, the schedule for it is going to be June first through July fourteenth. And during the summer program, we focus on literacy and math. Uh, the junior high.
One way.
I'm sorry.
Did you say June first?
Twenty-first.
Oh, first. Yeah. Yeah.
Um, the junior high program is going to be intervention based. The dates are the second, the same, June twenty-first through July fourteenth. Um, we are going to be using the I-Ready Intervention Program for support there and we are looking to hire a teacher at that level as well. And then the high school, um, so high school staff in this puzzle are looking for students who need credit recovery support. So the summer school programming for that will be focused on that. We're looking to hire a teacher to do that. Uh, the dates of that program will be on the same, June twenty-first through July fourteenth. Uh, we do have some money, um, potentially built for field trips to summer as well for the program. I know traditionally, um, they've taken trips over to library and a few other places, so uh, we're looking to support that again this year. So this is an extension. Um, it does include more teachers, um, and some field trip pieces that traditionally have not always happened. So. With that, I'd like to open up any questions about the summer program.
Um, the high school, you said, is credit recovery based and only one teacher?
Yes.
To, to teach all the subjects?
So depending on the needs, we can add additional teachers, but what happens with the credit recoveries of the student needs that they have their work and materials they need to complete from the teachers. So the teachers, the summer school teachers facilitating that learning. Um, if our numbers do creep up to a higher level, do you have the money to hire an additional person at both the junior high and the high school level as well?
So it's, they're basically like doing independent learning with support?
At the high school, well, it's credit recovery. So if a child took a class and didn't receive class, uh, credit for that, they have the work that they need to complete to receive the credit for that course. Teacher will be facilitating that learning. So the materials will be coming from the teacher who taught the course. The summer.
Right.
Facility that.
And they're doing it independently, but with support from that summer school teacher, basically, if they need help, they can help complete the work. Okay. And then the junior high, you said, I ready. What else are they?
So that's the intervention program. So that's based on the students', um, RTI system. They evaluate the students who where they're deficient, um, and then use the I-Ready program, which is facilitated by the teachers to, um, help recover some of those gaps that they were unfinished learning that they may have.
And that's computer based?
I ready is.
Okay. So would they be doing anything else in addition to the computer based learning?
Well, the computer based learning guides it and obviously the instruction level of each individual child will be directed by the teacher. So there, you know, it depends on the child's needs. Some students, um, can learn successfully through that system. Other students will need that additional guidance from the teacher, which would then become kind of pen and paper type work. So it really depends on the child's needs and their, their level.
And then the, the elementary is, is just voluntary. There is, is there any sort of recommendation coming from the teachers to the parents? Like?
Don't we open it to all students?
Right, but is there any sort of like teacher recommendation going out if a kid is falling behind in reading or they have gaps in learning from the two years of the quarantine? Is there any sort of recommendation coming from teachers directly?
Teachers periodically recommend students, you know, we have discussions through IEPs or parent teacher conferences, but we offer it to all, all students.
Okay. I was just thinking of how to get the numbers up.
So much recovery though, at the, at the elementary school.
No, it's not a recovery. It's supplemental learning for.
Yeah.
But they're supposed to be addressing the missed learning from the quarantine. So
Yep.
That, that is, that is recovery then, isn't it?
Well, so here, here's the unfinished learning is, is, is learning lost over the course. So, um, it's not going in with an RTI plan specifying this, this, and this we shot. It's, it's literacy and math, additional instruction.
Okay.
Built on any gaps that may have existed during the time.
So we're, um, having, you said one like head teacher for Granite and then for some support.
The head teacher covers.
Okay. So, and you said four teachers for Granite. Is it? Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so my daughter did it last year and it was, it was kind of, um, and there was like field trips involved and, and it was kind of loose. I feel like she wasn't, um, is there, is there structure to it? Is there gonna be, um, like you said, with four teachers, are each gonna get a grade or like a, a level or?
So what we've always done traditionally is, is, um, our numbers always tend to spike right before school gets out. So even though our numbers are not at thirty-five this year, I am not concerned about that yet. Uh, just very similar like pre-K registration, right? They tend to spike before school. Um, what is done is we look at the students that are coming into the programming and the needs, and then we've always divided up staff and then what will be who, what group of students that will be working. So we want to keep like age peers together.
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
Is it gonna be a little bit more structured as far as the learning's concerned?
Yeah. So this year, what we have is I ready to be able to guide that. So the teachers have those reports of student deficiencies that they can use to guide the instruction.
Okay. Yeah, kind of felt like arts and crafts and field trip, not necessarily learning as much last year.
Yeah, no, the focus of this year, where it's written in the agreement, is unfinished learning, literacy, math at the elementary school is obviously a big concern.
Okay.
So, yeah. And we're in the same position with the support of the grant. Should four teachers not be enough, like granted, we can hire another as well.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, but that's, that's the base of where we started and what we've advertised for at this point in time.
Where is that advertised? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Internally.
Okay.
Yeah, and you'll see these folks come across the board as well. Once we do the hiring.
Okay.
You'll get a list of what position each person's filling.
Any other questions about the summer school?
That's a question. No, no, summer school, both. Maybe. The extra three weeks, uh, there's a summer lunch program, but it ends August fifth. And we're exploring the opportunity to keep it open for those extra three weeks. And I had a meeting with Panquas today. They may be able to fund it too if you can't do it through the grant. But I wasn't sure if you would ask and see if we had workers that are willing to do it.
We have. We've already put out fields. We do have workers interested in, and Alicia and I are meeting later this week to discuss another grant that would qualify for to help us with summer food.
Okay. So something we'd like to see is, that's some kids that somebody could, you know, like getting during the days.
Yeah, our goal is to try to feed students year round essentially. Uh, yeah. So after that meeting later this week, a lot of them better, better understanding of how that money can support us in the work we do. And if we need support, let us know. Yeah, absolutely.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. Question on Granite Street, drop off and pickup.
Yeah, I'd like to get us started just providing some of the feedback that I've received, um, and then some of my observations there as well. So I've had the opportunity to pick up and drop off, um, several times. The most recent was this past Friday. Um, so you know, based on my observations, I, I found the morning to actually be very fluid. Um, vehicles are pulling in. There's been very short wait periods. Um, the, the, the chain keeps moving, you know, the line keeps going. Their staff are out there to assist with opening doors. The students are getting out. Um, we've got that dedicated crosswalk area that they can walk and save. So, um, excuse me, overall, I found mornings to be working out quite well. Um, the afternoons, um, you know, overall, I think it's, we were dismissing students in larger groups. The morning is kind of spread out right on arrival when parents get there. Um, the largest groups in the afternoon, it is a little bit more sluggish. Um, but one of the things we're finding that parents are doing, which is presenting a safety concern is some folks are instead of coming through the line, they're asking their child to walk across the street and walk in the park. So what this results is a child coming through the crosswalk area and then cutting across the bus exit lane, the vehicle exit lane, cutting across Granite Street and over to the park. So there is a concern there. Um, so that piece is definitely prevalent and it's happened pretty much on a daily basis. Um, as far as the, the staff concerns, um, you know, this has been an added duty this year. So the staff are, I think, coming to grasp and working through that, but there has been some concerns raised with, you know, we're having staff stay out, um, sometimes during the fall weather, we would have like recess inside, um, the rain, the cold. But then most recently, um, the black flies, mosquitoes are creating some issues for some folks. Um, because like I said, this is, you know, a lot of some of these days, a day we wouldn't have staff and students outside. Um, so there, there is in addition to that, this duty does extend sometimes beyond what we're asking all of our staff to do. So there is some staff that are concerned about that. Um, I will say on their behalf, they've been, um, exceptional, good at accepting this and working through this. Um, you know, we presented it as a trial. They know we're trying to work through, ensure the student's safety. So my hat goes off to them for, for working with us and being flexible to do this. So, um, what I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I do have a recommendation, but I'd like to hear other comments first and then we can. If there are.
My, my only comment is, uh, some of the kids that are coming, and I don't know what street is what, but coming across the bridge. There's a sidewalk there. There's also the sidewalk that goes up to where you guys put the bike rack.
Yeah.
Some of the kids are not going up the sidewalk. They get off the sidewalk right on the corner. Where the parents are pulling out to go over by Mr. Trainer and and Mrs. Sellers to go into the building. And that's creating a problem.
Cutting across.
Yeah.
Are we, if people aren't following the rules, are we giving them a warning or something that they're not doing it right or?
I think it's the parents are asking the children to do that. It's kind of the parent's responsibility if that's what they want their kids to do because they don't want to wait in the line. I waited in the line today and it was from the beginning to the end, it was six minutes.
Was that pick up or drop off?
Pick up. Six minutes. I was the very last car. Six minutes.
I didn't know seeing any vehicle drop off. We, I mean, that's much more.
Did I say pick up or drop off? I meant pick up today with six minutes. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the ones that I follow are the ones that are going across the bridge or. I heard stuff. I think. One across the street or something. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have parents that are parking on the other side of Granite Street. So what's happening is kids are being dismissed. And you know, parents are meeting them over on the other side of the road. So these kids are now crossing Granite Street.
Have we talked to those parents and let them know that's?
Well, we reviewed the procedures, but we were, you know, we don't have the authority to tell a parent where their kids can, cannot go after we dismiss them.
I don't want to see most of them getting hit. That's for sure.
And no agreement. That was, you know, the basis of this trial is to make things safer. And unfortunately, that's, you know, I guess that's, you know, criticism reflects for us.
I don't think it would hurt to send out a reminder, a communication to the parents and caregivers and, um, extended family members that pick up their kids and drop them off. It'd be a nice reminder that the school worked together as a team to create this safe system, um, on school property. That as long as they're following that system, they're supervised and they're protected by school staff. And to go outside of that, you know, uh, like you said, we can't stop that, but that's a risk the parent is now taking and we're not liable for that risk. Um, I did see some cars parked. This has been pretty regular too, uh, pickup in the afternoon. They park directly in front of Granite. So they're on the same side as the school, but they're parking in front of the school. Um, and asking their kids to walk down the sidewalk, cross in front of where cars are exiting to get in the car. So they can bypass the line.
To the parking on, on, on Granite Street.
But on the street, like in front of the sign, like where the sign is essentially, and they're asking their kids to walk out of the building, down the sidewalk, cross the exit um, to avoid the line. And, um, I did see a East Millinocket Police Officer, um, kind of surveying that day. And I thought that was awesome that they saw it. And I, I actually pulled over and spoke with the officer and he said, all it would take is a sign in front of the school that says no parking. And that eliminates that. And now kids, you know, it just would take a reminder of safety. Like we've set this up as long as they follow it, there shouldn't be an issue. Communication is key, I think.
Yeah, I had, um, a couple of Facebook things today. Um, one parent said that they think it's a huge improvement that works very well. Um, the kids walk safely to and from as well as drop off pickup. That's safe and efficient. Had a teacher say it definitely, um, don't think we should go back to the way it was. It was very unsafe. Always room for improvement. Another parent said, I definitely prefer the current plan. I was presently surprised how smooth the change was. The old way was chaos and unsafe. I prefer the current plan. I think the staff at Granite is doing a wonderful job and it's going very smoothly. So I think those are, those are pretty consistent from what I'm hearing throughout the community that it's safe and that the teachers are doing a great job and the kids and parents are following the plan pretty good.
How far do they escort the kids if they're not waiting in line for the kids? So if they have to walk up to them, do they escort them to a sidewalk so that they're not just leaving or going down the middle or? I've been over there, so I don't know much.
Well, I mean, so. They're, they're coming out of the school. They're going across the crosswalk. They're going down. But at the point that they leave the door, it's kind of in their, the student's hands. Am I speaking correctly?
So, um, let me try. Yes, I think you are. Let me try. So essentially, when we dismiss, we're bringing students now to the pickup line. Okay. What's happening is you've got students coming out there and once they dismiss, their parents are saying, you're crossing the street and we're here. So they're heading off in that direction. So what happens is you've got that exit still that remains the same. So you've got students cutting across by the, the bike rack and then across that exit line. So if they were going to a vehicle, they'd be kind of going straight into staff's hands, but when they released, they're heading off to be picked up, you know, per parent instruction, sometimes across the street, some grabbing bikes. So that, that's the concern. I can see that would be a concern. Yeah, it is.
Yeah. The parents are asking them to do that though, because we do have a very safe system put in place.
I did want to mention, um, the concern, the staff concern of the weather. Um, the PTO did purchase a pop-up at the very beginning of all of this because they felt terrible about, it was one of the very first rainy days. Um, the staff had umbrellas, which was great, but we wanted to like take it a step further and we purchased a, a pop-up for them. And I know it doesn't solve all the problems and it doesn't make the bugs go away, but, um, we were just trying to help and say thank you for going the extra mile and protecting our kids, but I haven't seen it used. But I haven't seen it used and I know it's not an easy thing to just go put it out. But I just wanted to say that that was kind of their way to say thank you.
Finally, is there a recommendation come from you or from the committee? So, you know, based on the feedback I've heard, we've got this trial going, I'm gonna make a recommendation. I mean, it is not based on the committee. I I would like to see the trial. We have money in the committee set aside, they have a civil engineer still come in and do their work and give us some advice. I feel, I feel drop off is going very fluid and excellent. There are some challenges with pickup. I do think some additional communication would at least get it out there again and provide a reminder to folks say, hey, listen, this is, you know, by you asking your child to walk across the street. You know, this is a potential safety issue. So, um, but I think, you know, we've got this established to to go away from the trial at this point in time. I don't think we'd benefit. So I I would like to see it continue through the year. Except, I know, must have referred to Rico's, the top with some engineers about getting some assessments done and really looking at what they have to say to see if there's something that we can do to make this better, you know, in the long. But we won't be able to have that discussion until we have that information either.
Do we have any, um, Louis, do we have any civil engineers that have come forward and said they have?
Cancelled two different, to try to get somebody up here to look at something that small is difficult. Then what do you want, they're they're, that's so low on the radar for some of these big companies that. Uh, but I'm still, and I'm sure they were trying to do it when they were in town on other businesses. This one firm does a lot of the town's work, so cannot incur a lot of upfront costs. You know, I could certainly probably call up and say, yes, we'll pay you X amount of dollars to come and do it. But I'll do a little more than that. I'll reach out again and see when I, you know, another reminder.
Do you know what the cost offhand, a ballpark?
We have gone through these types of things in the past and they can be anywhere from I I it all the, it with engineering, it all depends on what they're actually doing. I mean, it can be from thousand dollars to twenty thousand dollars, depending upon the level of assessment you want done. So really, you need to have that initial conversation first to decide what the depth is that we want to have them look at it.
Would that be a buildings and grounds committee to decide like what we want them to look at? Would that be, would that go back to?
We've already discussed what we want them to look at. I think we we know, you know, paying to look at the drop off and pickup. You know, we're gonna, I'm gonna present to them what we discussed in our meetings. And then what, how can you engineer it as better, basically?
Maybe it could be, I said, that was also included in the approval of the S R three grant as well. Josh, do you need a motion to do this? Keep it the same or just?
No, this was just a discussion, we wanted the committee members an opportunity to speak. I wanted to provide some feedback, I know Louis did as well. Just, you know, just questions floating around how how this has been going. So we wanted to have that public discussion on how well it is going.
So does everybody, yeah, I want to be sure, does everybody have the twenty three draft? And then the second piece of paper I'd like to make sure to have is the town chair, the F Y twenty three school budget. And then the third piece is the carryover sheet. This is the same sheet that we worked off last time, just some additional changes to it.
I was just gonna say, should we say something to welcome Sam back onto our meeting?
Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can.
Would like to formally welcome you back.
Thanks, I'd like to say, uh, thank you to everyone for their thoughts, prayers, um, cards, letters, flowers. It's, it really meant a lot. You're a little bit better day by day. Um, I had dialysis today and I think I might only have to go one or two more times because my kidneys are starting to work. Now I just got to start walking a little more. But it's really great to be part of this community. I got so many emails that it, like letters sent to the hospital down there that it broke their printer. So I'm really grateful for all of you and it's nice to be home.
Thank you, Sam. All right, so I want to first by noting, um, all the pieces we're working to discuss today are represented within this budget. Okay, all the pieces are in there. So first sheet I want to focus on is the the school budget, the F Y twenty four this year. Um, so we covered this at the last meeting, but I felt that we were walking back through because there are some changes that we're gonna discuss that are gonna be reflected in the carryover sheet. And today, what the decisions and discussions are gonna really focus us off this carryover sheet, okay? Because our goal today is if the board can reach agreement, we can have this draft move forward to the town. So focus on that far left hand column, the F Y twenty three. So local EPS, um, and that's our ED two seventy nine again. You you see there's one million two hundred and ten thousand, so that number's not changed from our last discussion. Debt service has not changed since our last, that's our bill of progress. Local additional appropriation, you'll see that that number is higher than it has been in the past and we'll discuss that in just a second. Local adult education, our portions, it did have a slight increase, but overall, it's, you know, a fairly small figures to thirty two hundred dollars. Local school wants appropriation to help balance that program was ten thousand dollars. That has remained unchanged from previous years. So the total local appropriation, um, we went from two million nine hundred and ten thousand last year to a proposed amount of two hundred and ninety, um, two million nine hundred and eighty four thousand this year. So that is a difference of seven two thousand pounds. The carry forward, which is about halfway down the page, so the carry forward has not changed since the last discussion. But when we get into the next document, we're gonna talk a little bit about our suggestions and how to use that because there are some updates there. As you can see, as we move down, the grand total to the town has changed. Went from three million eleven hundred thousand last year to three million five hundred and eighty thousand this year. So down below is where we break those figures out, excuse me, and look at that. So again, the local revenues, three million five hundred and eighty thousand. State funding, so we are receiving some more state funding this year than we have in the past. That's three million eight eight hundred and seventeen thousand. Additional revenues were projected to be fairly consistent with what we were last year at three hundred and sixty six thousand. Which brings our total budget, uh, to seven million seven hundred and sixty four thousand, okay? So if you focus on the second to the right column on the bottom, um, this is where our percent increases, okay? And this is where we're making some of our decisions today. So if we look at our number of seven million seven hundred and sixty four thousand compared to last year, that is an increase of eight point two one percent. So when we break down the difference of what we're receiving from the state and local. So if we just look at the local, because that's what we're approving, are working to approve, um, it's three point five one percent. And to take that one step further, um, we're gonna go next to this carryover sheet discussed. If we apply our carryover to this budget and the proposal that you're gonna hear today, that's gonna bring the overall increase down to two point seven one percent, which is equivalent to about eight thousand dollars. Is there any questions thus far before I dive into the carryover? So the carryover. So you have three columns, the column five on the left is the item that we're looking at. The center is the cost associated with that item, four items. And then the far right is the running tally of our carryover and and what impacts and has. So I'm gonna go through each one and I'm gonna, um, because I want to be able to have you guys identify what is suggested new here versus the last draft that we looked at, okay? So our ED two seventy nine, we have seventeen thousand dollars difference there. That was in the last draft we discussed, we want to be able to cover that, okay? And that's, that's the additional piece that the ED two seventy nine said that the town needs to raise to qualify for their level of state funding. So we, uh, a little over a week ago met with Louis, uh, actually a little less than a week ago, excuse me. Because we got some information regarding oil, electricity and water sewer. So here, here's where some of these larger figures are coming into play. Our oil is gone from a little over, was it two twenty something a gallon? We're project projected to lock in in the four fifty ish range. And so when we're talking two seventy, seven five thousand gallons of oil used a year, you can see that we have discussed and recommend setting aside an additional hundred and fifty five thousand two hundred dollars to make up this difference. Electricity, I wish it was better news there, but electricity is kind of in that same boat. Our cost per kilowatt hour went from six cents on the current contract and the new contract is looking at approximately twelve cents per kilowatt hour.
You want to talk about these as you go?
If you'd like to, yeah, absolutely.
You talked about the price of four fifties, but we haven't locked in, right?
No.
Do we plan on locking in or? We know.
It's not advised to lock in currently. Typically, we lock in this this month sometime that the proportion that we bid with is highly recommended waiting till fall because prices looking at being lower in the fall. We have to add an additional, I mean, some of thousands if you want to lock in right now on top of this.
I was hoping we'd give them just, they said blocking.
Yeah, they're not advising to lock in.
More like do it.
Is that because oil production is increasing? So by the fall, like prices should come down hopefully?
Some of it's based on production, but they bid on, what it is, is they're bidding on oil futures, future market. And future market right now for fall is showing a mid four fifty range. Futures right now, if we bought for June, are in the five eighty ish range. So that's kind of what drives pricing.
It's consortium, they buy millions of gallons.
Over seven millions of gallons of fuel we're putting, that's. Yeah.
So I I would like to actually thank Louis at this point, if, you know, it wasn't for Louis' foresight, um, you know, we're in a situation now where we can actually top off potentially if we do lock into a lower price come fall. So now I want to thank Louis for that because all our schools are finding that in a position that they have to, you know, walk in and they're paying upwards of five, six dollars a gallon.
Have we met our quota, haven't we, at the bottom?
We have, we have.
But we can still get.
Met our quota and I I bid enough last year to top the tank stock, so we're in a good spot this year. We're in a good spot to, we can actually burn into the fall before, you know, and wait for that fall pricing without having to buy oil in between. So that puts us in a, if there's any silver lining, that's it, we can wait till fall.
Well, thank you for that.
Any questions about the electricity contract?
My one question would be, I see you've ordered on the solar power, does that help us at all?
It potentially will once the project.
Right now, yeah.
So, you know, I mean, if we we budget the additional thirty eight thousand dollars there, you know, if the project gets up and running, that could potentially help us. But we can't bank on that at this point in time because we're still in the construction phase. Any other questions regarding electricity? Okay, uh, water and sewer, um, small increase there, but there is an increase of three thousand. Case piece, so we do have money in the regular budget, but I propose an additional hundred thousand dollars based on some of the student needs that we have that have moved into town recently. So we're looking at that, unfortunately, I can't give you the details regarding that, but that is my recommendation to to help address those costs should be realized.
Josh, how many kids is a hundred thousand?
Two. Depending on the level of need, possibly one and a half. So one of the good things that kids do is does is they bill us based on the level of needs and staff support that a child is receiving. So, um, you know, depending what the I V P D team determines, you know, they could be in the fifty thousand dollar range or they may be more. A P A D position, so after our discussion at the last meeting, this was a direction that the board wanted us to bring back to the table. So it is on this list for the cost of seven, seven thousand dollars.
Any questions regarding that? So that's basically the increase we're asking for.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, if you want to, you can go back to that, any of the other figures. Yeah, it's roughly eighty thousand dollars, the two point seven one percent. Um, the rest of those, I'm gonna review them, but they are not new, this is a discussion we had last time as well. So we have stipend increases that we need to be per contract. The two additional L T S were in there, again, to support our special education programs in both schools. Um, and then we've seen a need for additional OT services for our students in the area. By that additional contracted service is gonna be approximately thirteen thousand dollars next year. And so that number, okay, so with everything we've discussed today, um, utilizes all of our carryover, okay? That is based on the things I found in the past, that is not uncommon practice to use all of our carryover and also the budget. But this list does do that and uses that five hundred and ninety five thousand dollars, which results in us asking the town for two point seven one percent. If this is approved.
That leaves us with a zero. Underneath the balance.
Correct, that is all of our carryover, that's using what you got with our carryover. Like I said, based on the figures I've looked through years past, that is not uncommon practice that has been used.
To get to zero?
Well, to use all of the carryover also to next year's budget. Because if you look back through some of these other, you know, um, you know, last year, the carryover was two hundred thousand dollars and they brought forth two hundred thousand. The four thousand one sixty eight.
We already had a balance. No, no, we went the whole one year, I don't want to do that again. And that's just one bad thing happened.
And what about speech services? Because that's not one here, will we have an increase in the for speech services?
So right now, we actually do not have a need for increased speech services and we still have the money that exists currently for the position that's that we're trying to hire for. So that will be no change to the budget. Because currently we employ one and a half speech and that, based on our student needs, I P's right now, we have enough staff to to support the needs of the students. OT, we've seen the spike in the number of students qualifying for OT services, which is a related service. A student can't qualify for OT as a standard in service, but we've seen an increase in our student needs. And traditionally OT, but not always, is most often, um, well, that student says they develop. So we want to be prepared for that because we know it's gonna, we're gonna need to hire more service than yet.
You mentioned that OT services are contracted, we don't have OT person.
Yep, we have one full time. And then what has happened in years past is we contracted for the additional service because we've never had enough where we needed two people. We need a one and a half, um, so we've always contracted the rest out to be able to provide those services. So it it saves a district money, we've never wanted to be able to hire those two full time positions or even one and a half. This way it saves us a little bit of money. This way it saves us a little bit of money overall.
And then I did have a question off of Michelle's question about speech. Are our S L P is becoming the director of special ed?
Yeah, assistant special.
Right, so we have to now pay her for that and hire a speech person, correct?
Yeah, her position is grant funded.
There's the assistant special director.
Yeah, it's through the local incentive grant.
Okay.
So that's not having implications on our budget that we're discussing here too. But that's that's a very good question.
And also looking through this, I didn't see the international program in here at all. So is that under something I missed?
No, um, so the international program, um, as I mentioned the other day, um, you know, both the town and the school department, it's engaged legal um counsel to work out the issues with those accounts. And so that is not on here at this point in time because we really need some directive of the current accounts and where they're at until we can add any piece to this.
So if the international program ended up getting added back in, wouldn't that take away from our carryover as well?
No, there is money in here on. Um, on page twenty nine. In the uh adopted budget column, okay, keep my this is a graph, but it's in my column. Revenue or expenditures. So we've accounted for eighty three thousand dollars there depending on what happens with the international program.
Where is that? I'm sorry.
Uh, page twenty nine.
Yep.
Um, if you look at the far right column, the numbers column, the adopted budget line, eighty three thousand two hundred five dollars thirty four cents. I explained that to you this afternoon. Yeah, you can explain it again, cause I don't think I get it. Yeah, so so what what I'm seeing is our expenses are higher than our revenue. Right now. So you're saying that eighty three thousand is gonna get added for revenue? So this eighty three thousand, if you look at the total budget, is included in here. Okay, and this money being this budget would keep this program running. Here's where I can't go into detail. Okay, both the town and the school environment have legal counsel to look into the issues surrounding these accounts. I can't go into any further detail, you know, that those questions need to be sorted out by the town legal council and school legal council. But having this money in here included in the total of the budget allows us to have the money to operate that budget next year. And then obviously, when the time comes, you know, if we have anticipated revenue in the future that exceeds that, that will offset, you know, the budget to the future. That is, that is a way for us to keep this program running until we'll leave accounts make some advice to the board and which will come at some point. So they'll be sitting down with the board and talking to the board and making recommendations regarding this.
So what do you, what does this eighty three thousand cover then? Is that Michelle's?
It covers all the expenses with the program. All the contracts, um, Michelle, the contracts with schools in China are pieces there. Many of the documentation, documentation fees back and forth. Josh, we're also missing no E rate. So that's all open now. So E rate is a separate program now. Um, I can bring that forward to you. It is so E rate is a grants program now, which um gives schools a couple of options. What it does is you still see technology money, um, but is a loan program that reduce rate, which for the over a season years. So your E rate is not so much brilliant now as it's funded at a reduced rate for technology. So there is money in the budget in one of these lines to pay our portion of E rate. Um, and you know, we're on a three year period. Um, next year, we're we're going to, we don't know all the details yet, but we'll have an option to buy into our luxury version of dollars. From technology devices in the future for all of us. So, um, we don't have all those details yet, but once we do, we'll see them.
Isn't that where we just got a lot of like computers and?
Um, yes, yeah, that in a combination with some of the extra grants as well.
Um, I have a question back to the carryover cost. Um, the last one listed um negotiated contract changes and previously budgeted materials. Can we just go into that a little bit as well?
Yeah, so we have contract changes that occur every year with steps and teachers. Um, so with that, um, we negotiated several contracts for administrators, support, um, you know, like Louis' position, some of those other positions. So um, and the other thing is we looked at is over the past couple of years, there's been some pieces here and there um cut out of technology. Uh, we've been able to rely on the grants that we've had in years past and obviously those times are out. So, um, we we were not able to go back and replace those warrants to what they once were, but we made small adjustments to try to head back in that direction for future years. Um, cause you keep in mind, we have S R three for one more year. And then, you know, unless something changes, the federal government offices have a COVID related grant, that grant might be going to be used up. And those programs will be going. Josh, your retirement insurance is going down just because people fast away? Yes. Yeah, you'll see a change from that, you know, as people fast away from you every year. So what was our increase for health insurance? Two percent right now, two percent.
So legal counsel comes back in about the whole um international program. Like, what's that gonna do? Like, if they recommend? You know what I mean? Like, that eighty three, I guess I'm still kind of hung up on that.
Yeah, so just so depending on how that pans out, that is possible that one doesn't get used. And if that money doesn't get used, it goes into our carryover to help support next year's budget.
But it's included in the budget now or it's not included in the budget now?
The eighty three thousand is in that total that that we're talking about now.
So can, I guess, I have a question now based on what you're asking is um, number ten on the agenda is to see if the board will approve this budget if we don't know where this is, where this stands right now because it's in it's in limbo, then shouldn't we wait till we hear?
So here's, here's the reality, but based on the board feedback we received, this could extend to the fall quite easily or longer.
The 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 legal.
Yeah.
With just the international program?
Yeah, so the international program and you you got the activities accounts, those are all included. So, you know, unfortunately, in an ideal world, they would come to resolution before the budget vote, but that's that's not reality right now that, you know, um, if we have this resolved by, I'm gonna say early in the fall. Somewhere where I'm predicting based on the feedback we've received so far. By law, we have to vote on our school budget before July first. That's when the budget starts. Maybe it turned down those longer than when we brought the old budget. Correct. The old budget. I think by law, we have to have a budget in place. And set that down. We have to.
Um, I'm confused as to why, like, this student account, like, how did, how did this international program get in the lawyer's hands? Like, I don't, I don't understand how that happened because I thought the school accounts were something and then the international program's completely different. So I don't understand.
Yeah, so un- unfortunately, I can't go into those details tonight. Not not in the public sector.
Okay. And so what happens next year? If you said this isn't gonna be done until the possibly the fall, what's like, are we just gonna continue to pay these expenses?
So.
Like the salaries and stuff for next year? I guess.
Yeah, with that money opened into this budget, that would allow us to continue operation of the program until our legal counsel and the town legal counsel can make some decisions and then our legal counsel will come back to the board for you guys to make some decisions around those accounts.
Either scenario, we're gonna be we could be eighty two thousand to the good or to the or to the red. So right now, we're saying that that eighty three thousand dollars is there.
Right.
Well, we can vote, it's gonna be there. Even if it's not there, we still, well, if we have to pay that, we'll pay that. So I understand it.
Well, if you voted, it's there to be used, okay? And that will allow us to continue the program. Once the accounts get settled out, if we don't need that eighty three thousand dollars, that becomes carryover for the for the fall budget year. So when we're sitting here a year from now having that discussion, you know, there'll be that eighty three thousand dollars of carryover in that in the next budget. And then the board will make a decision on, you know, if they wanna allocate that to offset local costs, which is, you know, typically what happens.
If if this is being discussed by legal counsel, is the program happening or not? Are we paying someone to run a program? That's be currently like in limbo. That's, I think that's what you're saying, right? Are we continuing? That's my, yeah, I think that's a good question.
Yeah, because that eighty three thousand is in the budget to be able to do.
Is that a good way to spend eighty three thousand dollars?
Well, considering the program is about two and a half million dollars to offset the school budgets, I would say absolutely.
Has.
If you average it out minus COVID, I mean, we made about a hundred ninety nine thousand dollars a year on average since the program began in two thousand and eleven. So. One of the expenses about.
Ten years ago.
Neighborhood three hundred and I think it was eighty thousand dollars. Somewhere in the city.
Over eleven years, three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, it was like, I think it was three hundred eighty ish in that ballpark. I mean, the program has been extremely valuable to the community, not only from the educational standpoint.
For sure.
Yeah.
Things have been a lot cheaper. China, at the end of it, was being provided for. Where with the other job.
You know, and as I noted about the international program itself, you know, we need to, you know, Michelle's not a great job of looking outside of the box because obviously with the trade relations in COVID in China, you know, um, we wanna look for revenue, we wanna look to make revenue, but we need to obviously expand our horizons beyond just the Chinese contracts.
Any other questions on the budget?
The comment, it scared me that there was zero.
You know, that's why I want to get.
Yeah, I remember in our budget workshop back in April, I feel like we said we wanted to have, I don't remember the magic number was. And but we wanted like a little padding, like we didn't wanna spend all the carryover. We wanted was it like a hundred thousand? We wanted some padding and now we don't.
So the reality is coming the cost of fuel, electricity, right?
Well, and other things.
We have the. There's no question we have to do that.
Yeah.
And that's why I brought this proposal back because it this does change our discussion because we did discuss about, you know, zero to the town and and hopefully having about a hundred thousand dollars of of cushion. However, if you look at some of the additions we had to maybe fuel oil and whatnot, that, you know, that more than eat that up. Oh, is this the right time to put the two new positions on, I guess? Get two additional attacks and BP at a hundred thousand. Is this the right time?
My personal feeling for the staff and students is the right time.
But we still have to get it approved too.
That's right.
I think another way to look at this, you know, coming in at two point seven one to eighty thousand dollars, considering what we have worked through with the increase in double fuel, oil, electricity, some of those other pieces, some of those contingencies of of student needs or whatnot. I I think that's a very easy one. I I seen the paper that that way had a twenty percent increase. Uh, when some of the other schools, their deal with fuel oils, just like we are, and what what do we see in for increases? I I've heard everything from that six to, I've heard everything from anywhere from the six to twenty percent range.
We thought you were grabbing something.
It it all depends on, you know, what schools have done in the past. And in some schools, um, you know, have oil reserve accounts, which I know we discussed trying to get started. Um, it was a discussion that started last year. Um, we noted it this year, you know, some schools have been able to fall back on some of those accounts that are, you know, now saving their their bottom line. Uh, you know, the other significant thing that's happening is negotiations, you know, you wanna do to negotiate next year, but um there's been some substantial increases in negotiating contracts for school employees and that's solely to be competitive. And and this fall figuring all retirees, highest salaries to replace old school salaries.
Can I ask about the the two additional ed texts? Um, are those two additional like brand new right now that we need for next year? Or are those the ones that we've been saying all along that we still need more ed texts?
No, so these will be additional.
Additional, and that's because of increased students in special ed. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, our our population of students receiving services up to, I think it was a hundred and thirty two lost on my check somewhere in that ballpark. So um, our percentage is is quite high and, you know, we're working to meet those needs of those students.
Um, well, where I, I mean, where I stand as a board member and a special ed teacher, um, that's not negotiable. You have to have support for those kids. So I fully support adding two more to help the special ed programs. Um, but I think that's all I agree with adding in terms of positions. Because that helps, you said it helps all the schools that those two positions would support granite and stern.
Yeah, to be one and rate it on it. And this, you know, this would give us the option hiring them if we could find them.
Okay.
And that's.
Yeah, I mean, there's no guarantees of hiring.
Last couple of years.
We've had title positions open for several months now without applications. I just look, I think you had five minutes.
Kids piece, do we get?
We, well, we charge them rent. So, yeah, we have income from the rent. Which is a, bring around forty five thousand dollars. But that hundred thousand is on top of priority budget.
And that's just a prediction of kids that moved into the area. Have the, have those I P meetings been held?
Yes, the I P's have held the discussions have been had. There's been placements there. Um, kids piece like us is in a staffing shortage right now. Um, but the discussions have been held and that's why I'm bringing forward this budget to, you know, the discussions have not been held and not be asked for that additional money. And you never know, I mean, people move in and out of towns and you never know what this can look like, so. What would happen if you didn't put in, you know, we had it as circle? Can we use it if we needed to? When it comes to surplus, if there was a carryover. You can't use it.
You can't use it in the year.
Or, well, disallocated for kids' piece and and special ed, I can't, you know, go buy oil with it, it's gonna stay within that budget line.
So when we had people voting. And they went to that, we hadn't paid the, whatever it was, we had to find the money in the budget.
It probably came out of your special education. So when we break down the budget for voting, you get to the allocations for the different categories. You know, I can't say for sure, I don't have the information from, but I'm guessing the key for special education.
I'm just going through and seeing the, from this budget, the last budget. The special ed and the operation of the plant, those are the two huge ones, absolutely. The other ones are just contractual.
I'm still, I'm still really caught up on this like international thing. So can you just explain it to me one more time? Like if we're, have we received any revenue for? It?
So.
Like for next year to like justify?
So we've got, um, right now, three kids that are guaranteed to be coming in next year. So that will give us a revenue of, I think, in a thirty-ish thousand dollars, it might be slightly more. But we, like I said, these accounts have got to be issued though through legal counsel. But surely to support this provides that money there to be able to operate the program. While this is all getting worked in.
Even if we're bringing in thirty thousand and we're asking for eighty three thousand. And then the account that program's already in a deficit. It just seems like that eighty three thousand dollars should be sent spent somewhere else. And to manage those three students could be done in another administrative position or like a stipend.
That'd be if the dual diploma program was done. Still have to live over those because we have contracts.
Yeah, but like for thirty thirty, like you're gonna.
Talking about, who wants a dope?
Yeah, cause keep in mind.
We have to support that.
Right, but like, I mean, before that position used to. I mean, coordinate travel, coordinate, I mean, like it it used to be a quite a bit. Compared to just thirty diplomas and three students compared to what it was in its heyday.
But we don't really know what the numbers are gonna be yet.
We we, well, we still have those contracts. Is is, you know, the Chinese Education Authority, if they release some of these contracts and allow these schools to start coming back to normal. We're gonna be inundated, we will have another, you know, strong financial year, we're gonna have tons and tons of gone. Of diplomas to work through all the verifications of records, I mean, that's a lot of, that's a very time consuming process. Working with the schools to ensure that that is all done. The 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 big pieces is just carrying this money. To allow that program to continue. We don't want to be violating those contracts. And those are international contracts, so schools could come back on your school department to say, hey, you violated our contract, didn't provide this. Legal trouble with them if they chose to pursue it.
So the really only risk involved is that the program doesn't go up at all. But then.
I mean, we know we're gonna have some some students from Europe coming in three. I know, um, Michelle's been working with families to try to support more. The Chinese pieces, like I said, we have those active contracts, we're, we've been talking with these folks, so it's not like. The relationships have deteriorated, the relationships are still there, they're interested, we're obviously interested in fulfilling our contract. The issue is like some of the money that's been tied up that we talked about last time is, you know. I mean, until the Education Authority there releases that, we're not gonna get those funds. And I think it's also important to note that, you know, anticipated revenue was not guaranteed money, we can't say that we, you know, it's a forecasted amount. If we think we're gonna make a hundred thousand dollars, there's no guarantee, that's history, that's projection, so. As far as those accounts, like I said, those are legal counsel hands, and I think we gotta let them do their job and. Work on a solution there to be able to present to the board.
Well, we just got this information today about the huge difference in what we thought from the last meeting. Would it be responsible of us to sleep on it and? Think about it before we make a vote, I mean, we could do a special meeting, couldn't we?
So what happened to the special meeting? We have to get it ready for town stake in up in two weeks, I think.
June twenty third. The next meeting would be June fourteen. And then we usually meet with the.
Then we have to have a vote after that too, before July for us.
Do we meet with the town? Is that how it usually is done? Like we approve it and then we have to.
Yeah, so what what's approved this year goes to the town. And then, um, I answer, you know, kind of like the discussion we have, you had to review things, answer the questions they have. They have a decision to make to the supporter or ask for amendments to it, if they ask amendments to it, we come back. Work on the amendments, present them back to the school board, back to the town. Process.
Can they just arbitrarily? Make changes?
Can they make changes to it? They can make recommendations, but they have to have.
We'd have to approve after.
Yeah, the recommendation doesn't come to this superintendent, recommendation comes from the school board. So if they, if during my meeting, they say, you know, let's look at X, Y, and Z, I bring that back to our team, we look at that. And then we present it to the school board, the school board would have to make a decision of saying they approve that.
Guess how it's happened in the past. There's been changes made and we didn't vote on it, I don't. It's not been here for a while, am I right, Tom?
Recommendation that goes forward to the town, it's going to come from the school board.
Right.
But can they change it and put it to the voters?
Change our budget, it's it's allocation of education money, that's a school board's responsibility.
I just saw that it's up for, um, town discussion on June twenty third. That they're gonna, it's wastewater school. Third one that I'm not remembering, on June twenty third. For the public to hear about it and ask questions. So there is time, is what you were asking. Or recommending. I mean, I mean, you got it, I, I don't know, I just think that it went from a pretty big carryover to like zero. And I know Kevin, you were pretty passionate the last time that we released some money in there.
So we didn't know about electricity and fuel prices then. To me, that's the biggie, right?
It is.
Change what we had to carry over, it was across the field of electricity.
Fuel over double.
Well, three different positions, and then no, nothing for behavioral or anything like that, but I don't know if we. I think we agreed on that, but anyway, three different positions. Plus now the uncertainty of the international program. And that being in the lawyer's hands tied up for until the fall. Pretty big thing too, that we didn't have knowledge of until tonight.
What do you mean by uncertainty? International programs will still be going. While legal discussion is being resolved.
And my question is, is that the responsible thing to do, considering it's already in the? It's already in a deficit.
It's a responsible thing for us to do on our part, to stay out of laws.
Okay, but they've also broken their contracts several times, so I'm sure if we wanted to put that in legal's hands, we would probably.
In the international court, just to be.
Well, also, I guess I'm just kind of, I mean, we're paying for. It doesn't matter, I guess it's all good. Do we need eighty three thousand dollars in expenses?
I mean, that's what we figured out. I I I think I go I go back to the big thing is, you know, anticipated revenue is not guaranteed funds.
Is it, is it just like gathering the passes, curtained funds? Well, we had to make custom a budget. The same thing happened, it's just not, doesn't materialize. And I, if we have to make. We can't go negative, you can't go below zero. So we're gonna have to cut costs. Once once you hit the zero, you're only going to hold.
But we're we're not expecting any curtailment from the state, so the number that we have is.
Well, what I'm just saying is the same idea, that if everything falls through. And we don't have the money to be able to pay that, how does it get paid?
I'm not sure I completely understand what you're asking. So if I were, we we have to operate within the allocations that are set forth. In this budget to be fiscally responsible, right? So i- if if we have a hundred thousand dollars, it's gonna, whatever, we need to stay within those. And that's why we're burning forward these adjustments to. Head that off through shore, we know.
Those adjustments are already.
That's for, you know, we know we're gonna be burning more fuel, so it's, you know, fiscally responsible to have that discussion now to say, hey. We need a hundred fifty five thousand dollars in additional oil money versus saying, let's just keep it the way it is and pan out and find ourselves in a deficit. You know. We did, these are, these are things that have been assessed by our administrative team, we've, you know, looked into the cost of what they're, what they're gonna be, and this is what we're recommending. Um, and if, you know, I I do understand, and that's why we're having this discussion tonight, it is not the zero that we discussed. But unfortunately, there's some pieces in here that we don't have control over.
So all this been said, the board would like to do it this morning.
I would like to say I'm I'm totally fine with letting us. Sleep on it and digest, since this was all given to us today. I think that's the responsible thing to do, and whether that means we set up a special meeting or vote at the next. That's that's just, that's the way I feel.
I would see about that, wait till the next, and then if we don't get a yes vote then, what do we do then?
A special meeting, I guess. Well, it's the fourteenth, and then the town is the twenty third. But we could have a special meeting between now and the next meeting, we could have a special meeting next week.
Because if we vote no, they have to go and fix the budget, whatever we wanna say.
If it's gonna be tabled tonight, we are gonna be looking at a special meeting, whether it be sooner or later, because. If we table it and go to the next meeting and then the board decides, no, we want to talk about X, Y, and Z adjustments, I need time to go back and make those adjustments. So we can put us in that timeframe, so if if that's the direction the board wishes, no, we're gonna have a special meeting.
Regularly electricity and fuel, that's that's not going to change.
So, right, so what would you discuss out of this that we could change? Uh, you know, are we gonna not do the ed techs or?
But I think those have to be there, because of special ed support is is necessary.
Your thoughts is that's a keeper, we have the fuel, electricity, you can't change that.
Is it, is the majority want to keep that?
So there's nothing on here that I can see that we're gonna discuss any further. No matter what the details are, no matter what comes out of the councils. We're still gonna have to to go with something, a budget here, you know. At eighty three thousand doesn't. Doesn't play in there as well. It's gonna have to be there one way or another to fulfill contracts. I don't see what we can change. If we can't change anything, we might as well move it forward. Sleeping on it isn't gonna change it for me, is it gonna change what's here? Am I correct?
Well, by agreeing, agreeing to it, we're agreeing that we want an AP AD and we want two additional ed tax.
Wanted the addiction points sometime.
Those are new.
So you're saying that maybe we don't need those extra attacks?
No, that's what I'm saying, this is, that's.
But you need them, but aren't you gonna get them?
Yes, but we're not, do we want to take that out of the budget at all? So what is the discussion there for not taking that out?
So that's a no for me, taking the international.
So if you went land by land here, what would you take out? What would you change?
Well, are we all in agreement that we do want the AP AD position?
Have we not agreed on that?
No, we didn't agree on that.
Well, let's talk about that then. Let's agree on that, then, then move on. We can do that tonight. Why are we, I don't understand what we're waiting, I don't see where waiting's gonna change this list at all, so we can make those changes.
Yeah, I I agree with you, Donnie, I think that we should, I guess we should talk about the changes, yeah, yeah, I agree, because we haven't made any.
We could go line by line here and say if we agree or disagree, we could actually take straw bolts on each one of those to see if anything's gonna change there. If it's not, then there's no sense of waiting. We might as well move forward. And we don't know what the town's gonna say, they might push this back to us anyway, where we, we may have to do some. More cre- creative thinking. Right now, I I don't think he's putting anything forward that we don't need, that we can live without. If there's something on here we can live on, definitely, let's get rid of it. Or if there's something we can get cheaper or whatnot, maybe Louis lying to us about the gas.
Sixty dollars for comp cap, what the?
But anyway, I don't think anything's gonna change, so if there is something gonna change, I'd like to hear right now if someone thinks they're gonna change something on here, if they are, then we. Then we shouldn't move forward, if there's something that needs to be changed, let's discuss it now and then move forward. My thoughts.
Could you explain the stipend increase, like what exactly the stipend increase is for, what positions those are for?
Yeah, so we have, we have a list of stipend positions that are associated with our teachers' contracts. Um, there's a lot of coaching position, uh, coaching position stipends, there's, um. Um, we are have esports now, which is gonna be officially starting this year. Um, we've discussed that at a previous board meeting. Um, there is stipends associated with, uh, teacher evaluation systems monitoring that, so. Um, if you look at the contract, there's a lot of stipend positions that we pay out, and depending on your experience, those folks get adjustments to those.
So that's an additional twenty thousand added to all of the other stipends in the contract?
Yeah, the adjustments are.
Does this happen every year?
Yes.
Stipend adjustments.
Yep, yep. Actually, by the negotiation.
So that's already been negotiated, correct?
Yeah, steps.
The only thing you and there is the esports, but the the board, you know, selected to do.
You notice that'll say three years and step ten or whatever, because they may have that prior experience.
The only sometimes you see that change will be the rare occasion where you have completely new people in all those type of positions, this doesn't happen.
And I have a stomach ache right now, but I'm going to say the way I feel, I'm sorry. I heard some sentiments from one of our public commenters.
I heard some sentiments from one of our public commenters. It isn't the first time that a public comment has brought up. Um, increased need for mental health support, and the key word is increase. Because I have asked several times what our mental health support looks like here, and the answer is always, well, we have these two people. And then a third person at Granite was a title-one person being used as a health, mental health support. I. I am hearing some staggering numbers at town council meetings coming out of the hospital emergency room. Of. Adults and children who are going through crises and needing support, and they have nowhere to go except. To the ER, and the ER is overwhelmed so much so. That they're asking for police support. They're asking for contracts now to have East Molina come and be there to help them. Because it's frankly become dangerous in the ER. And that includes children. That's just where I've always stood since the beginning of me getting on this board is I, when I sat in my interview. Um, for this position, I said, I want to see more health, mental health support for our students. And. I asked, where is it in the SR three? Where where is it? And I'm still not seeing it, and that's. That's where I'm a stick in the mud right now, is I'm just. I'm just disappointed that we have money to spend and. I'm not seeing it being spent on that, and. What our kids just went through with the quarantine and what they're still going through, trying to understand it, what just happened last week in Texas, for crying out loud, like. We need more support, and I I wanna see that before I see. Other things going on. So that's all I wanted to say about that.
Before we have tried to get those extra support and there's nobody.
And I'm not talking, I'm talking about programming, I'm talking about, there are people that are willing to work with our school. It's it's out there.
So are you talking just sort of curriculum or are you talking personnel?
Both.
Cause the personnel, I, you know, I've I've mentioned it before that we have, we have our two folks, one in each building, but we also have. Services where we work with like community care and some of those other agencies, and I actually attended a meeting last week to try to expand our our hunt for these people. We've always provided, we've had a contract for these folks to be able to provide those services. Um, you know, we provided that space, that connection for the families. Unfortunately, they're up against the same thing that that everybody else is, is not being able to find staff to support that. To be able to hire to do those positions, so, um, as far as curriculum piece, that is a discussion that the stakeholders are going to be having regarding the SR three, right? Is that is is on that list that I'll be discussing with that group.
But now a whole year's gone by. And what has been spent from SR three money that was supposed to be for that?
Unfortunately, you gotta be able to find people to do the jobs, which.
I just don't see the the ads in the paper. Um, that's, I'm just, I just wanna see more for our kids in that specific. Realm, just more support.
Anybody got anything else on the carryover?
Will we put the budget to a vote? As we presented?
And you, and I just wanna make clear, if the town council says we have to cut something, we do what they know.
If they say they want a cut of X number of dollars, I go back to the table and I bring forth a new proposal to the school board to discuss. And then the school board makes a decision what to move forward back to the town. So this process right here would happen again.
Anything? You know, have a motion to approve?
I consent to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three school budget as presented.
Motion, do I get a second?
Hope I'll second it for discussion.
An emotion by Don, your second by Kevin, discussion.
My question is. We're not wanting to cut any of these. And Erica would like something else added into the budget. We're going the wrong way.
That's nothing new, though. I've been saying this since our first budget workshop on April eighth.
But when we we talked about what we wanted.
I didn't agree to that, one thing.
Well, this is a democracy.
Okay, yeah.
Majority wins.
Right.
It's not wins, but you just.
Right.
If it's three to two, we have to win with the decision.
Of course.
So we did discuss all those things we talked about, our wish list or whatever it was. And I just see us going the wrong way. If no, we're not willing to touch any of these, now we're talking about something else too. Are we gonna get to a final, final number?
Right, if if the board adds anything to what we have here or changes anything, if you remember that two point on seven percent, that's gonna be impacted. Right, so if we add to this list, that number's gonna go up and take away from this list, that number's gonna go down. Or make adjustments accordingly.
And I don't like this. I don't like that we're not coming in zero. You know, we have a zero surplus. I don't like that at all. But where are we gonna make cuts? If we can't agree to make a cut off this fee, where are we gonna make the cuts?
That's my thoughts. We're not moving on this then. What can we do?
There weren't men on to do away and not do anything international. I'm not in support of that.
I'm not either, that's.
Are you, are you times in support of that?
I'm.
If you don't do anything there, we can wind up in trouble. It might have cost us more.
There's been discussion about the international tonight.
Well, I just, well, it was asked where it is in the budget, and then. If the number is just, yeah, we don't understand the numbers because we were told that it's in the hole, but. We have eighty-three thousand dollars set hot, set aside for it, so that doesn't make sense. So those are really legitimate questions.
My questions on this carryover.
Yes.
That's the money we have to pull. Is there any cha- anyone willing to make change on that at all?
I'm with you, Kevin. I'd much rather tell our taxpayers no raise, and I'd much rather carryover money. Just in case any of this increases unexpectedly.
And how do we get to that?
I didn't know.
Didn't foresee the huge expenses of the oil and gas. Even sewer going a little bit, but it's still enough.
And everyone.
No, is this, is there any way we're gonna change this, so we get so that we're not zero to us and then an increase to town?
I understand the mental health stuff's not gonna be in here. I just wanted to say that out loud, that I have been asking, we've had two budget discussions, only two. And I have been asking for more. Um, I'm just gonna say, I think our best bet is we need to keep the special exports. Obviously, we need to keep the additions for oil, electricity, water, that's, and that's not negotiable. Um, definitely still need OT, that's part of special ed. Um, stipend increases are contractual, I understand that. So I'm sorry, but I think if we want to come in at zero and have cushion, we need to kind of cross out the AP AD.
And I feel us very needed positions. Just like the.
Should we go now through and hold on each one of these things?
If you wanna do a straw poll.
And if, well, then we'd we'd have an idea if this could be, if there's no movement, if they all pass. I say we move on now, as much as I hate it, I'm gonna have to vote for it. Cause it's not gonna be any changes. What are we gonna wait for?
Cause the other thing, as a point of record, if if you, even if you cut like one piece out of this, like the AP AD, that's not gonna, that's gonna bring you to to pretty close to zero in the. To the town, but it is not going to address your concern, Kevin, regarding having additional carryover.
Or you'd have seventy-seven thousand.
No, you wouldn't, because we're asking for eighty thousand to seven, uh, two point seven one percent.
Unless, I have to come back, if the money comes in from our contractual stuff that we have, but we can't talk about.
I I can't use anticipated revenue funds to pay for this. Think think within those categories of the budget, administrator funding you can do that with, but I can't. I can't do that. I mean, those anticipated funds are to operate the cost of the.
So, I mean, we know we can't move on the oil, we can't move on electricity, the water, kids piece, we we gotta assume that's gonna happen that way.
Yeah, I mean, that's that's. That's one of those variables, like I said, as of right now, yeah, tomorrow morning, if if a couple of folks decide to move down, then that money's not needed there, but as we sit right now. Based on the discussions we've had, IEP meetings, I would be remiss if I didn't put that money in the budget somewhere.
And anybody agrees with additional ed tax?
One second, Danny, with the kids piece, could that, about what you said about kids piece just now, cuz that's when Donnie was on. Could that potentially even go up? If like, let's say another kid moves to town, and now we have another placement.
We, yes, we always.
We really should.
We always run that, yes.
Have more.
We do need this money reversed, two budget cycles down the road through ED two seventy-nine, we do get money back. But, you know, it's, those have been done through IEPs, the discussion and determination of that level of service for the kids. Like I said, we've had that discussion with with two failing residents and.
And special ed numbers continue to go up.
Yes.
So that's potentially, we could potentially see more kids piece kids. And additional ed tech and additional OT service, like special ed is increasing, therefore, we should really be looking at. Those numbers potentially increasing. So therefore, I think cutting the AP eighty decision position is. Kind of the best decision right now to be able to support possible special ed increases.
Money wise, but not monetary.
Not the.
Need wise.
And I'm not saying there isn't a need. I wanna be very, very clear about that. I. I'm, I'm a teacher, like I know what APs do, and they're very important. I understand that, I really do, but. Special ed needs. Are. Legal. Like they lead, when IEP has to be legally followed, and the money has to be there in a school district to support it.
I think right now. Administration has sufficiently budgeted. For. The special ed needs. I don't want to do away with that. That is safety for the students and for the staff. And like you say, with everything going on, I think that's a very important position. You can also sit here and say that Louis' projection of four fifty a gallon of oil. Could very well end up being five dollars a gallon, or four seventy-five. We can sit here and guess all night long about numbers and changes. Because they are bound to happen.
I I will say from staff feedback, the AP position is one of the best, the biggest concerns when we started developing the budget. You know, you've got Beth as principal essentially covering, you know, this duty is principal duty she's taken on, all the EP duty, she's been. Athletic director, um, you know, when I made my transition, I could go on to continue to manage some of our grants, so Beth has picked that. Uh, this is a position that's desperately needed to help address some of the behavior and safety pieces we had going on at high school. Um, and it, you know, it's gonna give Jeff, Beth a a chance to do her job as a principal as well. And with our population here, this this position is without question wanted.
Any more discussion? I've got a motion and a second. All in favor? Three, all opposed? Three, two. Meetings, June fourteenth. Like that. You might wanna rethink if you like this. The board is going to enter into executive session. I thank everybody for being here. Sam, it was good to see you again. Uh, you're staying for the executive session, correct?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone, and good night.
Yes.
Hold on a second, hold on. Do you wanna make your, you host for the conference room?
Yeah, that way we can have Sam stay.
Right. Do, can you do that, Donnie, too?
Was it, what she?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to you as host. Let me, let me get other people off before, hold on a minute, let me get, make sure everybody's off. I'm turning it over to you guys as host.
You know.
Yeah.
Was that what you was asking?
Yeah.
Okay.
You got it, Eric.
So then do I turn off recording?
Nope. We don't need to record.
Turn it off, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know it's right in front of people, where? Oh, thank you.
There you go, I just, yes.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.